I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of the Forest Grove City Council. It is June 23 at 7:06 PM. Will the city recorder please call and roll?
Councilor Augustin?
Here.
Council President Valenzuela?
Here.
Councilor Schimmel?
Here.
Councilor Martinez?
Here.
Councilor Marshall?
Here.
Councilor Falconer is absent. Mayor Wenzel?
Here.
Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the land of the Tualatin Kalapuas, who call themselves the Attilati. They are now part of the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron. Will the audience and the council please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Whereas, ooh, sorry, that was a little loud for me. Whereas parks and recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Forest Grove, Oregon. And whereas our parks and recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim the month of July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month. In Forest Grove, Oregon, Washington County, and encourages all residents of Forest Grove to celebrate the vital role park and recreation professionals play in bringing people together, providing essential services, and fostering the growth of our communities. Thank you. Proclamación. Considerando que los programas de parques y recreación son una parte integral de las comunidades en todo el país, incluidos Forest Grove, Oregon, y considerando que nuestros parques y programas de recreación son de vital importancia para establecer y mantener la calidad de vida en nuestras comunidades, garantizar la salud de todos los ciudadanos y contribuir al bienestar económico y ambiental de una comunidad y región. Y considerando que los parques y la recreación aumentan la prosperidad económica de una comunidad a través del aumento del valor de las propiedades, la expansión de la base impositiva local, el aumento del turismo, la atracción y retención de negocios, y la reducción del crimen. Y considerando que parques y recreación es un proveedor líder de comidas saludables, servicios de nutrición, y actividades educativas. Y considerando que nuestros parques y áreas de recreación natural aseguran la belleza ecológica de nuestra comunidad y brindan un lugar para que niños y adultos se conecten con la naturaleza y se diviertan al aire libre. Ahora, por tanto, el Ayuntamiento de la Ciudad de Forest Grove proclama por la presente el mes de junio de 2025 como mes de parques y recreación en Forest Grove, Oregon, condado de Washington, y alienta a todos los residentes de Forest Grove a celebrar el papel vital que desempeñan los profesionales de parques y recreación para unir a las personas, brindar servicios esenciales, y fomentar el crecimiento de nuestras comunidades. En testimonio de lo cual, ha suscrito la presente hecho el sello de la Ciudad de Forest Grove, Oregon, se emplace en este día 23 de junio de 2025 nuestra alcaldesa, Melinda Wenzel.
Thank you, Council President Valenzuela. Item B on the agenda is public comment. Time provided for anyone wishing to speak to city council on an item not on the agenda or on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed 30 minutes unless a majority of councillors present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand option to be called on. We will start with public comment, and I have Mr. Dale Feek. I think he knows where to sit in the record. Please state your name and zip code for the record, Mr. Feek.
Mayor Wenzel, and President Valenzuela, and councillors. I'm Dale Feek, resident of Forest Grove since 1966 when I started teaching 5th grade at Joseph Yale Elementary School. I loved it. I sent you two emails. One, and I sent those to you, Washington County Commissioners, the mayors of Forest Grove, Beaverton, and Hillsborough. So I want to refer those to you. You have documents of just the content. Yes, you have them. The first one is "We the People." And what I sent you started with Commissioner Nafisa Fi, as well as Congresswoman Bonamici, representing Salinas, Senator Reynolds, Beaverton Mayor Beatty, spoke in the Beaverton No Kings, July, June 14 massive rally. I was there. And in Forest Grove, Councilor Don Augustin and Senator Janine Solomon spoke at the large rally. I went to the latter part of that. "We the people spoke with our signs and our marches." Robert Reich says, and I quote, "Yesterday's demonstrations," that yesterday was June 14, "across the nation favor democracy and against Trump's dictatorship revealed the power of the people." The energy exu-- oh, may I have three minutes?
Yes, you may have an extra minute.
"The energy exuberance and solidarity of those demonstrations stood in sharp contrast to Trump's noxious display of tanks and military equipment on Constitution Avenue in Washington, DC. While Trump continues to polarize, blizzized the military, hundreds of thousands of us are saying no to his usurpation of power that belongs to the people." I only got 19, have the, another minute.
Minute and 20 seconds.
Another minute. "We will not be intimidated by the violence he has stirred up, not by the shootings of state legislators and their spouses in Minnesota, nor by the death threats against federal judges, nor the sluggish removal of a United States senator from a Trump official's news conference, nor by the arrest of a judge who didn't cooperate with ICE, nor by the addictions of people from our streets and places of work. We will be steadfast and strong as we were in yesterday's protest." Please complete reading that. The second thing I sent to you is "What I fear Trump will do with this war." Again, this is, I'm quoting Robert Reich. "Centralize even more power and curtail even more civil liberties," is what's happening. "One of my goals in writing this letter to you is every day to alert you to danger of our democracy so that you can alert others." That's why I'm alerting you. "Who then alert others?" And by this means we enlarge and strengthen our, our bulwark against the rule of fascism. "Wars pose particular challenges to democracy because nations at war often become more xenophobic and willing to give those in power extra leeway to protect the homeland. That's an underlying danger in Trump's war with Iran." Please continue reading. This is very serious. "Even though there may be a, a relaxing of shooting for five days, we are in steep terror." And if you haven't got this book, you want it on charity, let me know. So if you want one, let me know. I know four of you have it. Thank you, five of you have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. Next public comment, Carol Allen. Please state your name and zip code for the record.
Carol Ellery.
How do I say her last name?
Ellery.
Ellery, okay, I'm gonna fix that. Thank you.
Everybody says it wrong, that's okay. I'm fine. I've been telling you my story, and I'm going to continue with that. The thing this week I'm bringing to the table is resentment. I had a choice. When my father passed, he left me out of the will. He said that because I moved, you know, it was one of the stipulations because I moved with Oregon versus Chicago. And, you know, at that moment, I had a choice. I could be upset about that, or I could say, "My God, it had something better for me." So I made the choice of believing God had something better for me. And that choice was to let go of resentment and bitterness and receive the blessings from God above. With those blessings, I'm the blessed out of all three of my siblings. My one brother did pass, and even though my other two brothers, I mean, my brothers and them got property, all that property they lost. And I'm the one who, who God took care of in that. And it says in Isaiah 43:18, and it's not, this is a principle for anybody. This is not just for me, because the word of God's for everyone. And it says, "Forget the former things, do not dwell on the past. See, I am doing a new thing. Now it springs up. Do you not perceive it? I am making a way in your wilderness and streams in your wasteland." And that's what he did for me. I wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who did not sign up for public comment who would like to give public comment? Seeing no hands, are there any members of the community who would like to give public comment on Zoom? Please use the raise hand feature. Seeing none, I'm going to move on to item C, the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will all be adopted with a single motion without separate discussion. Councillors who wish to remove an item from the consent agenda may do so prior to the motion. Any item or items removed will be discussed and acted upon following the approval of the remaining items. What's the wish of the council?
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Consent agenda was moved by Councilor Martinez and seconded by Councilor Marshall. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say aye. Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved with a vote of six to zero. Item D is additions or deletions. City manager, do we have any additions or deletions?
We do have one deletion. Maria Rubio unfortunately fell ill, and so she will not be able to present tonight on behalf of Central Cultural regarding the senior center. So we have rescheduled the senior center update to July 14.
Okay, thank you. Any additions or deletions proposed by council? Seeing none, we're going to move on to presentations, and and our presentation tonight is from the Chair of our Parks and Recreation Commission, Mr. Brad Baffaro. Hello, Brad. You're good. We go way back.
Well, I thank you for inviting me here tonight. My presentation is very short, so it, first of all, good evening, council members and mayor. It's my pleasure to provide you with a brief overview of the Park and Recreation Commission's work over the past year. Our primary focus, occupying most of our time for this year, it's going to be a big surprise, has been the cost recovery plan. We worked closely with a consultant to review and refine the process and held multiple work sessions to consider bear's perspective and policy implication. At nearly every meeting, we received public comment primarily from concerned citizens representing the youth sports groups. Their input was an important part of our deliberation. We also carefully reviewed the draft policy over a course of several meetings. On March 19, 2025, the commission voted to support the cost recovery plan and the accompanied policy as written, with one exception, and most of you know this already. We were unable to come, reach an agreement on the rental service category, primarily the nonprofit youth sports programs and their feedback. So, um, this remains an open item for you, for further discussion, and mainly with, at your level. So, as you can see, the cost recovery plan was our main area of focus throughout the year. In addition to this work, our regularly monthly meetings included reports from staff, updates from the director, which kept us informed on the ongoing park operations and planning. That was most of our year in terms of commission, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to share a brief summary of our work, and we appreciate your continued support of park recreation in, in the city. And with that being said, that's the end. So are there any questions or?
Yeah, any questions for Brad? Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Schimmel.
Comment, Brad, thank, thank you for your service over the last two years. It sounds like it was a very difficult, tumultuous exercise, and I know as Chair, that could be difficult trying to preside that, and just extend our thanks to, to the full commission for wrestling with that and, and extending it to us. I would be curious to hear, you know, if you're willing to share the, some of the, the primary points, you know, for and against the, the rental piece, and what, what you would extend to us to consider, you know, as we deliberate it.
Right. I, I think that, at least in our discussions, in, in our meetings, our, our, there was a definite group that thought that all, that all groups should be paying fees, and then there was a definite group that thought that we should be supporting the, the youth sports, and the, the, the issues really centered around the amount of time that the volunteer coaches and the people who support their kids in, in those athletic programs spend, and the amount of money that they put into those fields. I made a motion, probably two or three weeks prior to this, to align our fees with the Forest Grove School District fees, which, which would mean that we, at Forest Grove, we don't charge nonprofit youth sports for the use of the fields, so they just need to be able, they just need to take care of those fields. And that's been practiced with, with the Forest Grove School District for as long as I can remember. So that motion went down 4-3, so there was obviously a, a split there. So, I mean, those are the main things. The rest of it was pretty straightforward. It was just that, that youth sports piece that really caused some discussion, put it that way. And you were there for, I think, one or two of the meetings, yeah? And, and they had some good points, really did.
So did you, did you know we had a work session on this at our last meeting? Have you had an update about kind of the consensus of the direction, what we're doing right now to work that out?
We had an update at our last meeting. It was very brief, but Mike gave us some feedback, and then, and so, so did Ann.
Okay.
Yeah.
We just, Ann and I kind of talked about it in tandem. We, she was just explaining, we just wanted more information, kind of, that's kind of what we went over. She was going to the next meeting, give her more information, because she was going to kind of run with what she was going to gather for us, and then bring it to the board before she brought it back to us.
Then I think that one of the things we, I mean, in council, like, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but the direction I remember the council giving Ann was, one of the ideas was we wanted to see a whole new category for nonprofit recreational programs, like, to like, move it more towards the common good instead of out of exclusive, like, on that continuum of exclusive use to?
Uh, Mike shared that.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike heard that.
Very cool.
It's just, I, I, we didn't have any discussion around that, really. It was just sharing information, and we moved on. So it'd probably be, maybe the next commission meeting we'll have.
She's going to take a bigger bite into it after she kind of has her chance to figure out what direction, give us a couple of options with the council, or with the commission, and then bring it back to council, and what I've gathered and what she was doing.
I guess for me, as a board, a school board member, and a, somebody who's been responsible for the, all those fields, what, what I've noticed is that as, as there's been discussion about fees, more and more of those youth sports coming into the school district property, a lot of them trying to make plans for the future. So, and I'm not sure if there was, I mean, where they, where they got the information, but that's just what I've noticed, especially in the last three or four months.
Well, I, I also want to extend my thanks because Brad is ending his eight years as a volunteer school board member. I think tomorrow, is tomorrow night your last meeting?
Uh, yeah.
Your term ends very soon, so, I mean, I don't want to like, out you because you wear your age really well, but as a former educator, administrator, and a volunteer school board member, I think the legacy you leave for Forest Grove, I like, I view you as one of my mentors, and, you know, hopefully I can do that for someone else, so, thanks, Brad.
Yeah, thanks, you, thank you. We're, by the way, we're at, we're celebrating the 35th year of CBAP, the summer program.
Oh, so good.
So we had our staff training today, and it was like 35 years, and I went, it's a long time.
Yeah, my son is like volunteering. I was like, I was like, get up for work, buddy.
Yep.
So, 35 years, love it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Okay, we're going to move on to item F on our agenda, which is public hearings, ordinances, and resolutions. I will now open the public hearing on resolution 2025-32. If approved by the city council, this resolution will set fees and charges for the 2025 through 2027 by any M budget year. Do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? Seeing none. City manager Jesse Van der Zanen will now present the staff report. Hello, Jesse.
Hello, Mayor, members of the council. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Paul Downey unfortunately won't be with us tonight, so this will be more of the Jesse show instead of the Paul show. So I will try to do my best in filling in for Paul on the various resolutions that you have before you this evening. So, the first resolution is resolution 2025-32. This is an annual resolution setting fees and charges pursuant to set, excuse me, pursuant to city code section 34.2 for licenses, permits, and fees. This is not to be confused with our light and power rates, our water rates, or our storm and our sewer rates. Those are handled by a separate resolution. This has to do only with licensing, permitting, and fees. These shall be adjusted by the council resolution effective each July. According to the code, these are based on the Consumer Price Index for the West Coast or the percentage of the wage adjustment for city employees. Staff is prepared a resolution setting fees for council consideration. A couple highlights. We have differentiated between public online printing costs for the library, between color copies, and then black and white copies. For light and power, there was a fee that was being charged as part of the building permit and planning process that was actually not on the schedule, but it was being charged through the Planning and Building Department. That has now been added to the schedule. The fee is the same that it was before, it's just now transparent and on the schedule, whereas before it was part of the building permit costs. One of the costs for the temporary power connection fee, staff is proposing to change that from a fixed cost to an actual cost, and that would mirror the other cost called the service extension fee that light and power charges. So both of those would actually be the actual cost as opposed to a pre-published cost, taking into account labor, material expenses at the time of the permit. For parks and recreation, we're proposing a 3% increase across the board, as we all, with all of the licenses, permits, and fees. There still is a moratorium on collecting field rental fees. That does remain in place. And then for the police department, we reassign the radar certification checks have been removed from the fee schedule, and the event permit fees, which are administered by the police department, are now under the police department on that schedule. Just to give you a couple examples of some of the changes, there's a, there's a whole list of changes, but for example, a first-time business license application fee would go from $34 to $35. It's a 3% increase. The utility billing account setup fee for in-city would go from $26.50 to $27.25, 75 cent increase. The Rogers Room rental fee would go from $18.80 to $19.25. And then just one more example, a temporary street closure for the police department would go from $23 to $23.75. So with that, the exhibit is included with your resolution, and unless there's any questions, that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome. Any questions for Jesse? Councilor Schimmel?
This may be a general question for many of these resolutions, is, is the public awareness, now that we're mirror, what, seven days from effectiveness, to how are we notifying the public?
So is, is the question how they're, how do we publish them, Councilor Schimmel? Yeah, so these will be published on the website. We have a fee schedule that will get published and put on the website. If there's any pamphlets that need to be updated, then we'll update those and get those done prior to July 1st, so that it's current and the current fees can be charged at that point. Jamie's sake is essentially the schedule, if it gets passed tonight, the schedule for 2025 is what would be published on the website, and, and we probably do some social media advancements, just letting folks know that there's been a 3% increase, and so expect a small adjustment in some of your rates and fees. That answer your question? All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Jesse?
Is, is there any way to remove the Parks and Rec until we get the cost recovery plan done?
I think that's what the moratorium, like, we saw, the moratorium's still.
I mean, it's going to adjust fees anyway.
But they're not going to be?
So those fees that we do end up, like, assessing fees for field use, would it change right after we do this, implement it? Because if we implement this and the prices are different than what are being said, because the price could be different with that, that plan, that, with the way it's calculating out, it could be more.
Go ahead, Jesse.
So, Councilor Marshall, when you look under field rental fees, under the Parks Facility Rentals, which is on the actual, on the exhibit here, it says, "Field rental fees, a moratorium was placed on collecting field rental fees until a fee study reviewing rental fees is completed and field rental rates are reestablished by the city council." If the council desires, they can take it out of the actual schedule. It has remained in the schedule. It's kind of always been in the schedule, but it's clear that there's a moratorium on it, and it cannot be charged by staff at this time. I hope that answers your question.
It did. My concern is that we're, we're showing that it would be this price right here, and that's what we'd be voting on right now, to put this in there, but the price could potentially be higher once we get that done, once a cost recovery plan gets done. Because we're basing this off of an increase of what it was previously, but this could be a totally different fee structure once this is complete.
So I, I think in response, the fee structure that Parks and Rec and the council and the commission have been working on, if and when a fee passes associated with that, it would replace whatever the fees are on this schedule. And so if there's a different, like, some of these fees, depending on what they are, may not exist anymore. They may change, they may go up, they may go down, but there wouldn't be two schedules for two separate fees, if that makes sense. There would only be one, and so if a new one is passed, it would be clear in that resolution what fee would go away on this schedule and be usurped by that fee, if that answers your question.
I, I, I think what Councilor Marshall is saying is that, so I, I think, I'm just going to try to?
I think we're just, I feel like we're double doing it because we're doing it now, and then we're going to change it in, potentially in a month or so.
Right, I see. Yeah, it's, but this is what it was based on the previous policy passed by.
I've had a few emails today wondering if this is what's going, like, they're just concerned that this is, we're throwing this in instead of the, well, before the fee study, and I'm just wanting to see what can be done. If that's, if you guys aren't concerned with it, then we'll kind of move with it how it is, but I was just feeling concerns from a handful of people.
I agree. I, I agree with the Councilor Marshall.
What did it, and make a comment?
Yeah, Councilor Schimmel.
I mean, would it be suitable that once we get a, a motion for the, the resolution, we can insert a, a motion to, I guess, suspend this exhibit?
Go ahead, Jesse.
So if, if the council would like, if there's concern about the rental fee, right now the lights fee is being charged, the rental fee is not being charged. The council can amend the schedule. There does need to be a motion on the floor, and once there's a motion on the floor, the council can amend the schedule if they'd like, so.
Yeah, I, yeah. I'll wait to see what people do, but I think there's, you know, to be said, like, right now, we are still charging lights, right? So, rights, and we're not charging for the field rental fee. I think that this was based on policy that was previously established, and so until there's new policy.
Continue with this one.
Continue, and then there, and then we say, like, hey, there's a moratorium placed on collecting field rental fees. But I mean, yeah.
That was more of a, like, question for you guys too, to see what the, what your guys' thoughts were on it. About, like, since this came out, I have, I've had about a few text messages and a few emails asking, is this what it is? Like, is this what's going forward? Are you guys pushing it through now? And I had to explain, no, this is a different thing, but that's, if that's a perception, then they, they think that's what's happening. thing. But that's, if that's a perception, then they, they think that's what's happening.
Right. Counsel Schimmel.
Thank you, Mayor. One thought is that in the course of a motion, adding a foot, another footnote with, I guess, four asterisks indicating ones that are associated with a, the moratorium, meaning they, they won't be in effect.
So currently, the way the, the exhibit is being administered is that the field rental fee applies to all of the fields that are listed on the schedule. And so the moratorium applies for all of the fields. Yeah, all the fields that are within this particulars, within this particular schedule. So it's referencing all of them. And it is specific to the field rental fees, not to the light fees. And so, but, but yeah, if the council would like to alter or change the schedule, you can certainly do that. It would, like, they require an amendment to the motion.
I would motion to amend it, to remove this until the next, until we figure out what's going on with the fee study.
Does that, does that need to happen after a motion for this?
I think there needs to be a motion on the floor to adopt the schedule, and then there would be an amendment to that motion.
Okay. Any other questions? For Jesse? Seeing none, I will now call in persons who have signed up to comment on the resolutions. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Are there anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? I have, just for the record, I have no one signed up on my, so I'm just doing a double check on the audience or Zoom attendees. Any opponents to the resolution? And any members wanting to give other testimony, other comments? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion from council to approve the resolution?
No move.
Second. Resolution 2025-32 was moved by Counsel Schimmel and seconded by Counselor Martinez. Are there any additional questions or further discussions from council on the motion before we proceed with the roll call vote?
Is this when I would make a motion?
Yeah.
I would motion to amend this to remove the Parks and Rec until the fee study is done.
Second. Okay. An amendment on the motion to remove field rentals from the Exhibit 1 General Fees and Charges Schedule was made by Counsel Marshall and seconded by Council President Valenzuela. So is there any?
Clarifying question?
Yeah.
So Counsel Marshall, do the, does the light fee remain, but the rental fee be removed?
Right now, they're currently paying for lights. So basically, whatever we have the moratorium, I would suggest that would be what we would remove is what we have the moratorium.
That would be the field rental fee that's listed on each park. Okay, thank you.
So for clarification, the, the light fee would still be charged.
Right.
Right now, we would take off field. So Park Shelter Spray Park would still be on the sheet, but Lincoln Park. So can I ask a question from staff? Lincoln, who gets chart? Does Pacific collect the revenue for Lincoln Park and the stadium and turf field, or does the city?
I'd have to defer that to Director Lane. We do have an agreement with Lincoln Park. I believe that we administer the fees and if, and retain the revenues, but I would have to double check with Director Lane on that. So.
Yeah. That's something I'm curious about, because on this schedule, Lincoln Park, Bond Field, Sherman Field, and Lincoln Park Practice Soccer Field. So those are one, two, three, four things on our fee schedule, and I'm not sure if we charge or if Pacific charges.
Yeah, I, I think for the times that they are used by the public and that, that fee is administered. But again, I'd have to check with Director Lane. And just to clarify, the moratorium is on the rental fee. It's not on the light fee. So the light fee is being administered. The field rental fee is not being administered.
And that's what you're proposing? Okay, any further discussion on it? Okay, let's do a roll call vote on the amendment.
Counsel Gustafson?
Yes.
Counsel President Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Schimmel?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. The amendment to resolution 2025-32 has been approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of six to zero. Okay, so now we will go back a minute, sorry. Then we'll go back to the motion on the table, resolution 2025-32. Any further discussion from council before we proceed with the roll call vote? Counsel Schimmel.
Extend an appreciation to Counsel Marshall for, for bringing it to our attention and ensuring that we do no harm.
Great, thank you. Any other, seeing no other discussion points, will the city recorder please call?
Counsel President Valenzuela?
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Sorry. I need to do the, will the city manager please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution number 2025-32, resolution setting fees and charges effective July 1st, 2025, and repealing resolution number 2024-24.
Thank you, Jesse. Counsel President Valenzuela, did you have additional comment?
No.
Okay.
No.
So, Ray, will you please call for the vote?
Counsel President Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Schimmel?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Gustafson?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Vote is six to zero. Resolution 2025-32 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council. I will now open the public hearing on resolution 2025-33. If approved by the city council, this resolution will establish surface water management rates effective July 1st, 2025. Do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? Seeing none, City Manager Jesse Van der Zandt will now present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Starting in fiscal year 2017, 18, and first of all, let me pause and introduce Sally. Would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, Sally.
Sally Sosirchi.
Sally is our Assistant Finance Director. She's here to assist if we have any other questions about surface water or sewer. Greg Robertson, our Public Works and Engineering Director, is also in the audience, and I may ask him to come up, depending on the question. Starting in fiscal year 2017 and 18, Clean Water Services, who does storm and sewer water for the county and also for the city, they began setting a regional rate to cover their portion of the stormwater costs. The stormwater costs, just as a matter of familiarity, when you pass a stormwater facility that may be in a development that looks like it's fenced off generally, it could have a collecting pond, it might have some trees and shrubs that's intended to filter out water prior to going to a treatment facility, that's what is typically called a stormwater facility or a swim facility. Anyways, in 2017, 18, Clean Water Services began setting a regional rate to cover their portion of the costs, and local jurisdictions, not just Forest Grove, but all local jurisdictions within Washington County, started setting a local rate to cover their portion of the swim rate. This resolution deals with the city's portion for the swim rate. Just by way of, of information, this fee, about approximately 80% of the total swim fee goes to the city, approximately 20% goes to Clean Water Services. The city does maintain the stormwater facilities. The city started setting its local swim rate in July 1st, 2017. Clean Water Services, in a separate resolution you will be seeing, is increasing their monthly swim rate by 3% to $2.82 per dwelling unit. As of July 1st, the city's current swim fee is $9.43. The city is proposing to increase it 3%, which is matching Clean Water Services increase. That would result in a fee going from $9.43 per dwelling unit equivalent per month to $9.71 per dwelling unit equivalent per month effective July 1st, 2025. The total fee, that's Clean Waters and the cities combined, would increase 36 cents from $12.17 to $12.53. With that, that concludes my report. If there's any questions from the council, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Does council have any questions for Jesse? Yes, Counsel Schimmel.
Just for my curiosity, is, is there a way to attribute what, what the 3% is doing above and beyond?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, no, I appreciate the question. Thank you, Counsel Schimmel. Generally, the 3% is intended to try and, and match what our increases are for our expenses associated with the maintenance and the upkeep of the facilities that I was referring to. That includes both the capital costs and the maintenance costs. So the capital costs are typically things that might be replacing a tree. Maybe you have a plugged pipe. Maybe you might have to replace a pipe in the stormwater facility. The drainage is not working as good. Those types of things. But that 3% is to cover wages. It's to cover inventory, supplies, maintenance, all those sorts of things. So does that answer your question, Counsel?
Any further questions? Okay, I will now call on persons who have signed up to comment on the resolution. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. I have no one signed up on paper. Is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom who would like to testify as a proponent? Anyone as an opponent? Anyone wishing to provide other comments? Okay. The hearing is now closed. Is there a motion from council to approve the resolution?
A motion to approve resolution 2025-33.
Second. Thank you. Resolution 2025-33 was moved by Counsel Marshall and seconded by Counsel Gustafson. Is there any further discussion from council? Seeing none, will the city manager please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution number 2025-33, resolution establishing surface water management or swim rate for the city of Forest Grove effective July 1st, 2025, and repealing resolution number 2024-29.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call for the vote?
Counsel Schimmel?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Gustafson?
Yes.
Counsel President Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes.
In a vote of six to zero, resolution 2025-33 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council. I will now open the public hearing on resolution 2025-34. If approved by the city council, this resolution will establish sewer rates effective July 1st, 2025. Do any city councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? Seeing none, City Manager Jesse Van der Zandt will now present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So the companion to the swim rate is the sewer rate. That's why you often hear them paired as, as storm and, storm and sewer, swim and sewer. Very similar to the swim fee. Prior to July 1st, 2017, Clean Water Services, they also set a regional and a local rate, and the city added a surcharge after 2017 to raise sufficient revenue to cover the costs of operating the local portion of the sewer collection system. When Clean Water Services began setting their regional rate, we separated those two rates, and very similar to swim, and we established a local rate. Clean Water Services is proposing a 3% increase to the regional sewer rates. Again, you'll see that in a subsequent resolution, does not require a public hearing after the public hearings are over. And staff is proposing a 3% increase to the local rate as of July 1st, 2025. The proposed resolution would increase the local base rate from $10.70 per dwelling equivalent unit to $11.02 per dwelling equivalent unit, and the use charge from 52 cents per 1,000 gallons to 53, 5.535 per 1,000 gallons per month. In the sewer fee, approximately 80% of the sewer fee itself is, is Clean Water Services portion of the fee. The city's portion of the fee is approximately 20%. So when you add those two together, the total typical residential customer in Forest Grove, the fee would go from $59.01 to $60.07 per month, for a total increase of $1.76 per month, based on the average residential use. I had a question earlier about how does our storm and sanitary sewer fees stack up to our neighbors, in this case, Beaverton and Hillsborough? Currently, we're about a little over $10 less per month than Hillsborough, and we're a little over $5 less per month than Beaverton. So our rates are very competitive when you look at some of our neighboring jurisdictions for these two services. With that, if there's any questions from the council, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Any questions for Jesse? Seeing none, I will now call on persons who have signed up to comment on the resolution. No one has signed up, but if you choose to comment, comments are limited to three minutes, and I would like you to please state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone who would like to testify as a proponent? Go ahead, Mr. Feek. As a proponent? Okay, then as an opponent? Seeing none. And then other comments, and I would like to invite Mr. Feek up, and Jesse will get out of your seat. Thank you, Jesse.
Mayor Wenzel, President Valenzuela.
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 I'll get it right sometimes. Thank you very much.
I appreciate the trying, Mr.
Thank you very much. Val is way later.
No. Valenzuela.
Valenzuela.
There you go.
Better.
Perfect.
Three minutes. I've already spent 20, but it's worth it. 20 seconds. I'm neutral. The reason I'm neutral is because I went to the Durham and Rock Creek Tours. I did that in the last month. So I became fairly knowledgeable. I'm already knowledgeable a lot about Clean Water Services because I attend their Clean Water Service Advisory Committee, and I've been doing this since 2013. So I know quite a bit about sewer and stormwater in the county, less so in the city. There is an issue with Hag Lake. One of the things that Clean Water Services sewage and stormwater was hoping for was Hag Lake would be raised, the dam. They've been notified, even though they spent millions of dollars trying to make it happen, lobbying, all that stuff. It's not going to be raised. Now they found out it's also maybe not even going to be reinforced. That creates a problem. Now, the reason it creates a problem is, if it's not going to be reinforced, it may not be able to even get it to the level that it currently is. That creates a major problem for sewers and stormwater because Clean Water Services has a problem with regulations of meeting temperature. And what they need is that cold water in the bottom of Hag Lake, so they can put it into Twalton River to meet EPA and DEQ standards for temperature. That creates a problem, long-term problem, maybe a rate problem. One of the things I testified to, I don't testify, I make public comment. This is a testified here. Public comment was before. This is testimony because it's a hearing. So I made public comment last week during the Clean Water Services hearing. A concern is sometimes Clean Water Services extends themselves. What I said last week was that they're doing a line from banks, maybe from, at North Plains, they're doing this line coming from there and going to treat their sewage. My question is, who's paying for that? So there are issues related to long-term costs and rates. I'm just letting you know that, so that, that it, it's not a done deal. Rates are going to go up. I'm neutral, but being informed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. You still had 10 seconds. This is the first time you haven't used your full time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any other testimony giving neutral or other comments? Okay, the hearing is now closed. Oh, wait, I forgot something. Can I reopen the hearing? I, I closed the hearing, but did you want to respond to the testimony?
No.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you. Is there a motion from the council to approve the resolution? Still move. Second. Okay, Resolution 2025-34 was moved by Counselor Martinez and seconded by Council President Valenzuela. Is there any further discussion from the council? Seeing none, will the city manager read the resolution by title only?
Resolution number 2025-34, Resolution Establishing City Sewer Utility Rates for the City of Forest Grove effective July 1, 2025, and repealing Resolution Number 2024-30.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call, roll? Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Gustafson?
Yes.
Council President Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Schimmel?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel? Yes. The vote is six to zero. Resolution 2025-34 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council. I will now open the public hearing on Resolution 2025-35. If approved by the city council, this resolution will fix solid waste rates charged by franchisees effective July 1, 2025. Do any city councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? Seeing none or hearing none, City Manager Jesse Van der Zanen will now present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This report might take a little bit longer than the previous ones, but let me see if I can unpack this. Metro is increasing its solid waste tip fees on July 1, 2025. Metro, of course, is the regional government that manages solid waste for this municipality and all municipalities within the metro boundary. The fees pertain to all cities within the metro area, and City Ordinance Number 87-2, the city's solid waste franchise agreement with Waste Management, allows the franchisee, which is Waste Management, or the city to apply for supplemental rate adjustment if Metro increases their fees. Notice of the transfer station tipping fee increase from Waste Management is attached. If you look at this letter in your packet, I'll go to that letter here now and just read you an excerpt from that letter that was provided by Waste Management. There was a letter to Paul Downey from Michael Jeffries, who is the area pricing director for Waste Management, and it was requesting a disposal pass, quote, "We need a disposal pass through to account for the new disposal rate at the Forest Grove Transfer Station. The transfer station will be raising their rate to $1.62.14 per ton effective July 1. The rate is the same amount that will be charged at all metro-regulated transfer stations. Further, the proposed rates account for the metro increase that occurred on July 4, 2024, as well as the known increase for July 1, 2025." If you'll notice this particular resolution, it's repealing Resolution 2023-18. The reason it's repealing that resolution and not one from 2024 is there was no proposed increase in 2024. Essentially, Waste Management absorbed that increase, did not ask for an increase from the city, and with the second increase from Metro has now approached the city and asked for a 5% increase in the tipping fee for the solid waste transfer station. Last, the Waste Management, per the code, has furnished written proof to the city that Metro's fees are changing for the services that are covered. They requested the increase per the code, and let's see if I have anything more. Let's see, the increase for residential and commercial customers as of July 1, 2025 will be an average of approximately 5%. That 5% has been spread over two years, starting from 2023, so it equals about 2.5% per year. A more detailed description is included in Exhibit A. Exhibit A was included in the packet. I think that concludes my report, Mayor, and if there's any questions, myself or staff or even Waste Management would be available to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Does counsel have questions for staff? Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Schimmel.
Well, this might show some, a little bit of ignorance, but just in terms of this rate, you know, it's related to Metro. Is there some delineation of a portion from Metro versus franchise costs? It's an understanding, trying to understand how these are formulated.
I would probably defer that question to either Greg or to Waste Management. We do have representatives from Waste Management here tonight with the mayor's permission. If you would like them to come up and answer the question, then I can.
That'd be amazing.
Okay.
Sir, members from Waste Management.
And just, the question I had written down was what portion is related to Metro tipping fees versus franchise costs, but I don't know that I'm asking that the right way based on the resolution.
Sure, thank you. My name's Meg Gallagher. I'm a pricing analyst with WM. If I understand the question you're asking, how much of the requested increase is due to the increase in disposal costs as opposed to increase in operational costs?
Yeah, I think that's maybe a better way, yeah.
The increase that we're requesting tonight is only because of the disposal costs. It's just a strict one-to-one relation as a result of the Metro tipping fee increasing effective July 1.
I have a question. I guess, so this is a fee from Metro, but like, I mean, what hap, I'm not saying it's going to, but what happens if the city, if the city council doesn't pass this? I mean, because it's just a fee like that Metro's charging, then yet we... Yeah, I don't know if anyone else has that question, but I'm curious, like.
It's a great question. Hold on just a moment here. I have too many papers. Oh, these are your papers. Okay, that's what I'm getting. Let me go to the code here for just a moment. Please give me a second.
You're fine.
So it says, "If the procedures and the rate increase have been followed, and if they've been verified by city staff, and it's a pass-through, the ordinance states, quote, 'The city council shall approve a rate change for the franchisee which passes through the changes in its fees set by the Metropolitan Service District or Metro.'"
Then can I have a follow-up question? Shouldn't this just be, I mean, it shall means we have to.
Yes.
So the process of a hearing and a vote seems like really confusing to me. I mean, at first I was like, should this have gone in the consent agenda? But then even then, there's a vote to...
I agree 100%. I think we probably would have put it on the consent agenda, except that it requires a public hearing.
Right.
Yeah. Absent that, it would have been on the consent agenda.
Okay. Got it. Any other questions? Thank you, Waste Management, for coming in and being available to answer our questions. Thanks. Any other questions for staff or Waste Management?
I do have it. So we could technically vote no, and it wouldn't make a difference?
Well, I don't think we can vote no.
No, I'm just trying to make sense of it.
Saying we shall, like, read it again.
I think maybe another way to characterize this is the affirmative vote by the city council. If it is a pass-through and that has been followed and affirmed, it's really an affirmation that the process has been followed, and that the fee does apply, that the fee is a pass-through, as Waste Management mentioned it was. And if all those conditions apply, which they do here, then it's a shall vote. And so it's the process, really, that's, this is kind of referring to, in addition to the fee. It's more of a certification, if you will. If those processes have been followed, if they have not been followed, then discretion would apply, and shall would not, would not apply in this case, if that made sense, so.
Okay, thank you. Are we good? Any other questions? Okay, so I will now call on persons who signed up to comment on the resolutions. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Are there any proponents wishing to provide testimony? Any opponents wishing to provide testimony? Any other individuals wishing to give neutral testimony or other comments? Seeing none, I will now close the hearing. Is there a motion from counsel to approve the resolution?
Still moved.
Resolution 2025-35 was moved by Counselor Gustafson and seconded by Counselor Marshall. Is there any further discussion from the council? Seeing none, I mean, we shall do what we're told. So no further discussion. City Manager, please read the resolution by title only.
Resolution 2025-35, Fixing Solid Waste Rates to Be Charged by Franchisee in the City of Forest Grove effective July 1, 2025, and repealing Resolution Number 2023-18.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call, roll? Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Gustafson?
Yes.
Council President Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Schimmel?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel? Yes. The vote is six to zero. Resolution 2025-35 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council. Thank you. And I got a lot of papers, too. Okay. I will now open the public hearing on Resolution 2025-36. If approved by the city council, this resolution will adopt findings supporting an exemption for a contract for managed IT services, declare such an exemption, and authorize an award of this contract to Structured Communications, Communication Systems Incorporated. Do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? Seeing none, City Manager Jesse Van der Zanen will now present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. With regard to Resolution 2025-36, which is seeking an exemption from normal procurement services for Structured, the reason for this particular request is despite multiple attempts, the city has been unable to successfully recruit an information technology manager. Difficulty recruiting and retaining IC staff is not unique to Forest Grove, and it's resulted in municipalities increasingly seeking outside assistance for IT services or some level of IT services, depending on what the service is. In response to this difficulty, city staff is recommending outsourcing IT management services necessary for the city to properly function, in this case, to Structured Communication Systems Incorporated. To select a provider, the city conducted a limited solicitation to attract a qualified firm to perform these services and has selected a qualified firm. To enter a contract, however, city staff is requesting an exemption from the statutory procurement process due to the specialized nature of the solicitation. A couple of things about this particular solicitation. One, the findings for this, the solicitation itself and the public notice were all reviewed by the city attorney. Also, this is asking for a one-year contract. Any extension of that contract, if there would be one, would have to come back to the city council as the local contract review board. So this is only for one year. Staff does have an intent to do an RFP sometime six to nine months into this contract, a more comprehensive RFP associated with IT services. We do want to get a little bit better idea about what all services we're going to require within that RFP, and this will give us some time to work with Structured, who's already on contract with the city, to be able to, to kind of discover what those services would be. Structured currently performs firewall management for us. They provide wireless access points, and they also do switches. Further, Structured has been onsite responsive to two IT critical situations that we had suffered in the last two months. One associated with the servers at City Hall, the other one associated with Toughbooks and their accessibility. They were timely, they had the depth in the bench, they had the knowledge to be able to fix the systems, and they did it in a very swift, swift manner. In terms of the formal, the informal evaluation itself, city staff reached out to four firms. We received four responses. Those firms knew that we were reaching out to other firms. One of the firms was slightly lower cost, however, they just did not have the capacity and the expertise to actually perform the work. Two of the firms could not meet the performance measures outlined in the informal solicitation, and they were more expensive. One firm, Structured Communication Systems, they did meet the performance measures, and they were within the budget, and they were lower cost compared to the two other firms. Organize Statute 279B.085 authorizes the local contract review board, in this case, the city council for the City of Forest Grove, to exempt certain contracts from the formal competitive proposal or bidding procurement requirements. Upon approval of certain findings effect, passing this resolution adopts those findings of fact and finds that this procurement is authorized and is ready to move forward. It does require the city to hold a public hearing, and as I mentioned earlier, this specific exemption would be for one year, and the city would do a formal solicitation process six to nine months from now to have a longer-term solution. So if you will, this is something that we're seeking right now to respond to the lack of IT management that we've been able to, not been able to find in this case, and to move forward until we can find a more comprehensive solution. So with that, that concludes my report, Mayor. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for Jesse? Yeah, Counselor Schimmel.
Hey, Mayor. Just a comment. I appreciate how you're using this instrument to fast-track and get our IT systems fixed. I know how urgent that is, especially for our first responders. And it seems to me, your explanation of the, you know, the burden of proof that, you know, we've done the due diligence seems to be adequate, or that you're providing us assurances that you've done the due diligence to ensure that this, it warrants the exemption.
Yeah, I think by searching other firms and asking for other proposals, and then letting the other firms know that we are asking for other proposals, that did assure some accountability in the process in terms of what the proposals were that we received. Yes.
I have a question. I agree with what Counselor Schimmel said as well, and I know, you know, it's been like really challenging for you and the whole, and City Hall. And I guess my, bluntly speaking, my question is, the timeline of like a long-term approach? How, what's your, are you going to stay accountable for, like, staying on that? And what is the timeline, and how are you going to stay accountable for a long-term plan?
So, great question. So this contract will give us basically a year. It'll provide the management services and essentially some of the backend services that we've had difficulty that the IT manager would also perform, that we've just had difficulty not being able to do it because we haven't been able to recruit for that position. I think the longer-term plan is to make sure that we're being responsive right now, make sure we're getting a very accurate assessment of our system, both kind of behind the scenes, if you will, but also the applications that we're running in our systems. Structured is very good at kind of making that assessment, take a lot of that data, and then go through a formal RFP competitive process later on this fall/winter, where we can really solicit from a number of different firms and get a longer-term proposition in place then. And so this is really a bridge to that. It's also a bridge to more information. It's a bridge to a scope of services, essentially, that we can comprise after having this service onboard for a little bit. We can really kind of put together what I would characterize as a very accurate scope of services, what we're going to need moving forward, and then go out and seek the expertise to do it, and do so in a formal, competitive bidding manner.
Great. Sounds good. Any other questions? Okay, we're gonna, I will now call on persons who have signed up to comment on the resolution. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to give public testimony who's a proponent? Opponents? Other comments? Okay, seeing, the hearing is now closed. Is there a motion from counsel to approve the resolution?
Still moved.
Got it. Counselor Schimmel, and then second?
Sure.
I'll second. Okay. Counselor Schimmel made the motion, and Council President Valenzuela seconded the motion to approve Resolution 2025-36. Is there any further discussion from counsel? Yes, Counselor Schimmel.
Just a comment. I mean, asking for this kind of exemption could be perceived or contribute to public distress, and I think by affirming a vote on this indicates that we believe that the city's done their due diligence on this, and that the exemption is in the public's best interest. And I'll give one example, is the current police facility... And I'll give one example is the current police facility that we, of all the departments we need to have uninterrupted service at the building. So this is absolutely in the public's best interest to ensure our officers get timely and immediate information.
Yeah, agreed. Any other discussion? Okay, City Manager, will you please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution number 2025-36, resolution adopting findings to support an exemption from the request for proposals process for a contract for managed information technology services and related services, declaring such exemption and authorizing an award of a contract to Structured Communication Systems Incorporated, Structured, following an informal solicitation process.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call roll?
Counselor Gustafson?
Yes.
Counselor President Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Schimmel?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes, the vote is six to zero. Resolution 2025-36 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council. I will now open the public hearing on resolution 2025-37. If approved by the city council, the resolution will increase parking fines. Do any counselors have a conflict of interest to declare? Seeing none, hearing none, City Manager Jesse Vander Zanin will now present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Resolution 2025-37 seeks to increase parking fines. It actually repeals a resolution from a little over a decade ago, of 2014-13, which was the last time that parking fines were increased. That's actually a little bit. 2014 actually adopted the same fines, just in a different reference in the code, but the fines were actually carried forward from 2005, and so this resolution would actually be replacing and increasing parking fines that were not increased since 2005 or 20 years ago. The purpose of this is to address council objective 2.7 regarding parking demand management and council objective 3.4, which is to improve code enforcement services. There was a work session held on this on June 9th, 2025, and council reached a consensus to look at increasing these, increasing parking fines. The fines were last updated in 2005, and this would increase them effective July 1st. Actually, it would increase them, excuse me, I need to amend that. Yeah, it would.
I think we did 90 days.
It would be a 90-day implementation period, so they would be effective, they would be effective but not applied until 90 days subsequent to the resolution passing. What's happening currently is Pacific University has established a parking fine of $20, but they employ a sliding scale up to $50 for repeat offenders. And so what we're seeing from a code compliance perspective is patrons are parking on the city street because the risk of a $15 fine is much less expensive than between 20 and $50. The council also reached a consensus that where applicable to apply the state fine. So if you look at the fee schedule that was included in the resolution, this would include infractions such as obstructing a sidewalk or a crosswalk, parking too far from the curb, wrong direction on the street. Really what this resolution pertains to is overtime parking, parking in a city park after hours, parking in an alley unlawfully, designated fire lane, loading zone, bus stop, parking space, and in violation of a disabled zone. That's what this resolution is pertaining to. So the other fines would be applying just the state fine. So with that, if there's any questions from council, I'd be happy to try and answer them, but otherwise this is seeking to try and implement the consensus that was reached during the June 9th work session. With that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Jesse? Nope, I don't see any. So I will now call in persons who signed up to comment on the resolution. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Any proponents? Any opponents? Any other testimony? Okay, the hearing is now closed. You were right about my rest. Is there a motion from council to approve the resolution? Move that we approve resolution 2025-37. Thank you. The motion was moved by Counselor Martinez and seconded by Counselor Gustafson. Is there any further discussion from council?
The only thing I would like to say about it is I think, and I know it's really hard because we're a full-service city and there's lots of things, but some way to kind of keep us, like a way to check in on our fines, like our parking fines, to make sure they're, you know, we have different resolutions that say like, hey, you need to be within this percentage of the salary, like we need to review this every five years or 10 years. I think that this one, I mean, it's 20 years.
Yeah.
20 years, I mean, and I'm not, like, I don't want to, like, kind of out myself, but she says outing herself. You know, there's been a situation in the last year where I was like, oh, I don't know if I should drive home. And so I walked home and then my parking ticket was $15, and I was like, should I explain why I walked home? And I was like, no, it's only $15. Like, I'll just pay it and then be able to save face. And so anyways, I'm just saying that I think that there's some work that we could do on the policy level just to keep us at the same rate of like costs. You know, we're paying our code enforcer more, like, there should just be a rate of, like, checking on these, whether it's five years or 10 years.
Yeah, great, great question. Currently, there's multiple exhibits and resolutions associated with fees and licenses and rates and fines. One of the projects that City Hall is working on is while those may need to be adopted separately for certain ordinance or statutory or public hearing purposes, we are looking to try and amalgamate all of those into one document, which will not only be more transparent to the public, it will have these all in one place so that circumstances that you're referring to, Mayor, about getting missed over time would occur less frequently and hopefully not occur at all, because we have a central way in which to review these on a per annum basis, and in doing so, try to make sure that they're, that they're current and relevant and reflective of what the council would like to do.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion or comments? Seeing none, will the city manager please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution number 2025-37, resolution to increase parking fines and to repeal resolution number 2014-13.
Thank you, and will the city recorder please call roll?
Counsel President Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Schimmel?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Gustafson? Mayor Wenzel?
Yes, in a vote of six to zero, resolution 2025-37 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council. And with that, I think we are done with our public hearings. No, I think so. So moving on to resolution 2025-38, transferring appropriations within various funds for fiscal year 2024 through 25. We have our city manager Jesse Vander Zanin and then Sally Sosirchi with, who's our assistant finance, I don't know your title, sorry. Assistant Finance Director, thank you, Sally.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. And this is pertaining to this year's budget, the fiscal year 24, 25 budget. The adopted budget for any given fiscal year is based upon the best estimates at the time that the budget is adopted, and during the fiscal year, unanticipated events occur and actual expenditures become known as the year progresses. At the end of the fiscal year, standard procedure to review the expenditures throughout the budget and to modify appropriations, which are the legal expenditure limits for expenditures which may exceed the appropriated levels at the end of the fiscal year. Oregon Revised Statute 294 permits governing bodies to transfer appropriations within a fund by resolution, so the budget appropriations are not exceeded. This resolution is also appropriating funds due to unanticipated revenue in the building fund that resulted in more professional services and state building surcharges than had been anticipated and budgeted. So in effect, we had more revenue, but we also had more expenses associated with that revenue. This increase in unanticipated revenue resulted primarily from industrial development. Oregon Revised Statute 294-471 allows the supplemental to be prepared under certain circumstances, including when a request for services or facilities is received, and the cost will be paid for by a private individual, corporation, or company, or by another governmental unit, and the amount of the request could not have been known for certain at the time the budget was prepared. In the building fund, I will say that's relatively common. You make your best estimate, but you don't necessarily know when somebody is going to apply for a building permit and what their timeline is, and in doing so, sometimes the revenue can be a little bit off. Lastly, this resolution is also appropriating funds due to unanticipated allocation changes in the American Rescue Plan that resulted in transfers between multiple accounts within the ARPA fund. The ARPA fund had to be expended by December 31st of last year, and the reason for the allocation changes is that to expend the funds prior to the deadline, allocations were made to authorized projects that were eligible to expend funds from projects that were ineligible to expend funds at the time. The total amount of the grant, the categories of the funds and the eligible projects that were approved by the council did not change. So I'm going to go over the transfers briefly. They are listed in order in your resolution. This is intended to explain a little more fully, the actual transfers and the codes that are explained in the resolution. The first transfer is $10,000 to the general, from the general fund contingency to the legislative and executive department to pay for wages that were more than anticipated due to the budget not reflecting the actual wage increases. The total appropriations in this case would need to be increased by $10,000 to $738,132. The second transfer we're proposing is $15,000 from the non-departmental intermittent wages to the Recreation Division to pay for intermittent employee wages being higher than anticipated. Intermittent employee wages are allocated between the Aquatic Center, Parks and Recreation, and the actual allocation of those employees' wages in the budget within those services category differed from what occurred during the year. The overall personnel budget for the Parks and Rec Department was not exceeded. It's just that within those certain divisions, one was higher and another one was lower. The total appropriations for the Recreation Division would need to be increased by $15,000 to $332,695. Transfer, $10,000 needs to be transferred from the Sewer Fund contingency to the Sewer Fund to pay for personal services being over the total budgeted amount based on the fund's monthly payroll expenditures. Similar to the allocation of wages noted in number two above, the public's work staff is allocated between streets, sewer, water, and surface water management when the budget is prepared. When the actual work is performed and it's coded to a certain light item, the time spent in each fund is charged to that fund and may vary slightly from the budgeted amount. Staff spent more time in the Sewer Fund this year than was estimated in the budget. Total appropriations for the Sewer Fund regular employee wages therefore need to be increased by $10,000 to $298,926. Number four, the supplemental and transfer, $300,000 in additional revenue needs to be supplemented to the structural building permit revenue to reflect the increase in building permit revenues. Subsequently, $225,000 is being transferred from that fund to professional services expenditures and $75,000 to intergovernmental services expenditures. These are basically the expenditures that are required to review the permit and the additional permits that came in as a result of the additional revenue. The intergovernmental revenue is used to generally pay for Washington County when it comes to inspections for electrical and plumbing, and the professional services are associated with looking at engineering drawings associated with building permits and plans for that particular development. The total building permit fund services appropriations would therefore need to be increased $300,000 to $1,610,028. And last, we're proposing to transfer $114,000 and $114,036 from ARPA fund transfer expenditures, $77,652 from ARPA fund professional services expenditures, $79,693 from ARPA fund balance, and $5,437 from the ARPA fund interest revenue for a total transfer of $276,818. Recall, this was out of a total of $5.8 million that was granted to the city under the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, to fund capital outlay expenditures. The transfers from the above sources to capital outlay was done to expend all the ARPA funds by the required deadline and went to authorized projects such as the library restroom, the teen remodel, the downtown glow up project, aquatic center improvements, and automated external defibrillators for all city buildings. The projects where the money came from was the overall city fee study that we were not able to fully execute, and also the city website and branding, a portion of which we were able to execute, which was the website. We were not able, however, to do the branding. And then also a portion was from the GIS conversion of the data. Part of those funds went to these capital projects close to the expiration of December 31st, 2024. At the time of the budget preparation, the total grand expenditure amount was known, but it was not known exactly what was to be budgeted between the expenditure categories. The budget transfer will correct the budget to the corrected amounts. I would say just overall, the ARPA funds have been expended as of December 31st, 2024, prior to the deadline. So with that, Mayor and council, I would entertain any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Jesse? Counselor Schimmel?
Yeah, this is an interesting one for me. I've seen him in years past. But I guess one, number five was, stems from a question raised to me about federal funds. And so this, for those folks wondering, you know, do we stand to lose federal funds? The answer is no, because we've spent it. We don't get any, any regular allocation, so.
Correct.
You know, lack of better phrase, you know, we're washing our hands of federal, direct federal allocation currently, so we don't stand to lose anything.
Well, okay, I disagree a little bit, but go ahead.
Okay. And the, let's see, on many of these, the, a common refrain I see is the transfers regarding wages, you're taking from contingency, putting them in the budget because of wages. I'm just curious about the, that tends to be a regular thing, and but I understand it's attributed to the actual work performed as opposed to the projected work.
Right, yes.
Generally, the rationale, and if there's a pattern, what are measures you put into the next cycle to encapsulate what we've learned from the previous cycle in terms of the work and such as that?
No, that's a great question. Every year we do look at what transfers have been made between the funds, and we do try to get a more current and accurate number in the budget within those different light items. So for example, for Parks and Recreation between Aquatics Parks and Recreation, we try to get a more accurate line item based on the previous year's budget, same with Public Works. And you try to do the best you can. Sometimes what happens is you'll get a project or a program that will come up, however, that was done during the year that was unanticipated that you have to dedicate staff to. And so in this particular case, if we had something in the Sewer Department where you might have gotten a blown sewer line or something like that, that would require an inordinate amount of staff time to fix, that would take those percentages and maybe be a little bit off. If you look at it as an overall percentage of the budget, there are both relatively small fractions associated with it, and so the transfers in this particular case are between three, and in Public Works, it's between four divisions, and in Aquatics, it's between three, and we're transferring from two to one and the other one from three to, from three to one, if that makes sense. But we do try to use past performance as an indicator of future performance. Just sometimes unanticipated things come up.
It was interesting to hear this district superintendent speak of, you know, when they basically are deficit spending, and it's when they're starting to begin to bleed their contingency funds. Is there a similar analysis we do as we're transferring things out of contingency when that bleeds out or if we replenish that?
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question, and I'm glad I have an opportunity to answer it. So overall, the personnel services budgets overall were not exceeded, and so we're not over budget. We're just allocating funds within that budget between different divisions within the overall line item. So if the overall line item, for example, was 100, we're not asking to increase it to 110. We're just asking to divide the ones that were underneath it, that might have been 33, 33, 33, to 30 and 35. So it's not as though we're increasing that number with respect to the, in reference to your question about the overall savings account or what we call, well, we call it the savings account. I call it the savings account. It's a percentage of our overall expenses. The city council has a policy of maintaining the 25% reserves, and this has no impact on the reserves policy at all. Our reserves have maintained the same. In the prior year, we added to the reserve in this year's budget to maintain the 25%. And so this- And so this does not impact that, Counselor Schimmel. I hope that answers your question.
I wanted to go back to the federal dollars. So it's true that we have spent the American Rescue, the ARPA funds were our one time, and we spent all of those. But we have since been awarded congressional allocations, right? And so we have not received the $900,000 first, right? My understanding of talking to Keith, we have not received the $900,000 for solar panels?
That's correct. We're still working with Housing and Urban Development to set up the account to hopefully receive the money if and when it's released.
And then the $850,000 for the East Forest Grove TV Highway Safety Improvement. We've said we're going to work with ODOT to put the light you straight. Like we have a plan for what we're spending, but my, again, my understanding is we still haven't actually received.
We have an agreement in place with ODOT to receive the funds. But whether ODOT has actually received the funds or not, I'll have to double check on that. I don't think they have, but we have an agreement in place for when they do.
And I, and I think, you know, I, I think we are, I will agree that we are less reliant on federal funding than our partners at the county by a whole lot. And, you know, even some of our other, you know, Beaverton, Hillsborough. But I think that we'll continue to try to tap into congressional allocations because that really does, I mean, we're a small community until we have some sort of, you know, economic, like, something, then it's really hard for us to fund these bigger projects without partnerships. So, but I do think like the ARPA, I mean, I've been asking for this for five years and I'm just going to be I don't know, I guess I'm just not going to get it. But I am so proud of the way that Forest, City of Forest Grove, the Budget Committee Subcommittee, Paul Downey, like handled those ARPA fund dollars. I think that we really did such a good job of like spreading those one-time dollars from the federal government to so many different areas for our community to receive benefits. It's like one of the most proud, I think it was done in a really thoughtful, constructive way. And I thought the whole process was really good. And so that's, I know I've annoyed Paul numerous times by saying, Paul, like, share the story of all the things we did with this money. He's like, okay, okay, okay. He should be really proud. I think it was a really good.
I'll definitely take that back and, and have a conversation with Communications to kind of tell the story about what was the ARPA funding spent on and what were the projects? Because there was a lot of projects over the last few years that that money was allocated toward.
Yeah, cool. Thank you. Any other questions for Jesse?
Thank you for bringing that up. And in terms of the communication, it helps to know where it is potentially impacted and where we can, we can center our advocacy immediately on like the 850s.
And the 900,000. And then you know, he also canceled that. It was through, it was a transportation for EV chargers, right? So there was a $1.4 million infrastructure for EV chargers that we were going to share with the City of Tualatin. Us, and that got froze. So it's not, but there's just some things, so.
There's other infrastructure grants that we're also looking at right now that we can get our applications ready. We can get our agreements in place. But it's just really a matter of if the, if the money will be released.
Yeah. Okay, so no further discussion or questions? I guess it was just question time. Is there a motion from Council?
No move.
Second.
Hey, Resolution 2025 was moved by Counselor Schimmel, oh wait, 2025-38 was moved by Counselor Schimmel and seconded by Council President Valenzuela. Any further discussion from the Council?
Just, just, sorry to keep hitting on us. I think circling back to a, a learning from the, the National League of Cities Conference in DC where the, our congressional delegation are most effective when there's a very explicit ask. Like, these are the two things that we still need to see passed through that they, they get on their phone and know who's calling. So if any of us are in those conversations with our delegation, that, that's a secret.
Thank you. I agree. Maybe Bonneville in that pool for our missed it project. Okay, so will the city manager please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution number 2025-38, Resolution Transferring Appropriations Within Various Funds For Fiscal Year 2024-25.
Thank you. And will the city recorder please call roll?
Counselor Schimmel?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Augustusson?
Yes.
Council President Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Resolution 2025-38 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of six to zero. Moving on to resolution or item, well anyways, Resolution 2025-39. I'm going to turn it back over to Jesse Vander Zanin, and I think Greg ducked out.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council. So I referred to this resolution twice when the Council was considering both swim and sewer fees. This is the companion resolution that accepts the Clean Water Services rates for fiscal year 24, 25, 26. It also authorizes city staff to charge these rates and then remit these revenues back to Clean Water Services. So a little bit of background, Clean Water Services sets the sewer and surface water management rates, and those rates are set by the Board of County Commissioners who serves as a Clean Water Services Board also. They also set not only the swim and sewer rates, but they set the system development charge rates for both swim and for sewer. The city collects these funds and then we remit these payments back to the Clean Water Services. So this resolution is really about accepting the rates and authorizing city staff to collect these rates on behalf of Clean Water Services and then remitting these revenues back to Clean Water Services. Clean Water Services Board established the following increases effective July 1, 2025. The first was a 3% increase in the sewer rates, which would take the bill from 48.31 to 49.75 per dwelling equivalent unit per month. The Board also adopted a 3% increase in the storm water management rates, which would increase Clean Water Services rate from $2.74 per dwelling equivalent per unit per month to $2.82. And then last, the two SDC charges, the sewer SDC, they adopted a 1.8% increase from $7,009 to $7,139 per equivalent dwelling unit. Recall, this is system development charge is charged on new development, not existing development. And then the swim SDC, a 1.9% increase from $678 to $691 per EDU. The impact to the single-family residences is noted above. The city retains 20% of the sewer SDC. We retain 100% of the swim SDC. So the city will collect more revenue for each permit issued. That concludes the staff report. If there's any questions from the Council, I'd be happy to try and answer.
I have a question. Is there a benefit to the city to administer these rates for Clean Water Services?
That's a good question. It's pretty common for most municipalities to administer the rate with Clean Water Services. I will say there has been some conversation lately about how to delineate Clean Water Services rate either on the bill and separate it from the city's rate so that it's not a combined rate. There's also been discussion about Clean Water Services administering their own rate, and then the city administering the rate. The current intergovernmental agreement that we have with Clean Water Services requires that the city at this point administer these rates, but that agreement can be relooked at. There's some cities that are looking at trying to make sure that these fees are more transparent than what they are now because the customer sees it as, as one single rate and they assume it's the city rate when in fact, most of it is the Clean Water Services rate. And so those discussions are being had, Mayor. There's not an official proposal at this point, but it is being talked about.
Thank you.
If that answers your question fully, but.
No, and I, I think too, like when you're going to meetings and, you know, and I'll talk to Board members as well. There's, you know, with, I think, yeah, with the accountability, Clean Water Services, some of the things that have gone on, like, it's really important that there is accountability and public trust. And, you know, I don't want to, I don't want the city to lose public trust based on acts that we're, we're not a part of. So that's my concern with us carrying that for them is, you know, some of the things that have come out recently. Okay, any other questions?
Concur with the comment that, you know, we're, we can be perceived as complicit with that. Especially if we're not, you're not getting an invitation to the insurance board in Hawaii. Seems to be a shame.
Yeah. So this issue has come up recently. It is a topic of conversation, and I think the topic is really centered on making sure that the, the resident, the customer knows what fees are attributed to whom and what those fees go toward. And there can be some improvements in that area.
Perfect. Thank you for working on that. Is there a motion from Council?
So move.
Second.
Okay, resolution, I'm making, writing names, so I don't forget, sorry. Resolution 2025-39 was moved by Counselor Martinez and seconded by Counselor Marshall. Does Council have any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, will the city manager who's working double time tonight, please read it by title only?
Resolution number 2025-39, Resolution Accepting Clean Water Services Sanitary Sewer Utility Rates, Surface Water Management Rates, Swim System Development Charges and Sanitary Sewer System Development Charges effective July 1, 2025, and repealing resolution number 2024-31.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call roll?
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Augustusson?
Yes.
Council President Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Schimmel? Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Resolution 2025-39 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of six to zero. Moving on to Resolution 2025-40. It's a shocker, but I'm going to turn it back over to City Manager Jesse Vander Zanin.
It's the last resolution I have tonight. So Resolution 2025-40 is re-adopting the investment policy for the City of Forest Grove. The city last reviewed and adopted its current investment policy, which is this policy, on June 24, 2024. To keep the policy current and in line with best practices and in compliance with Oregon Revised Statute 294.135, the policy requires annual review and adoption by City Council. This policy does not apply to the city's defined benefit investments, which are covered by a separate policy. This policy, this policy essentially covers cash investments only. To give you an idea and an example of what those investments are, just briefly, this covers investments in US Treasuries, US Agency Obligations, Municipal Bonds, Commercial Paper, CDs, Oregon Short Term Fund, and Corporate Notes. So this is cash investments. This is not investments associated with the defined benefit or deferred compensation programs that the city administers. That's through a separate policy. The city's outside investment advisor has reviewed the policy and has no recommended changes. There have been no changes in state investment laws or in investment best practices since the policy was last reviewed, which was last year. Staff is recommending re-adoption with no changes of the investment policy. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Council may have.
Any questions for Jesse? Yes, Counselor Schimmel.
Yeah. I'm, I'm curious just from, from past recommendations from the public. I know they've reflected, you know, companies that, that invest, or, you know, companies that contribute to poor air quality or other things. Is there, does this reflect some of those prior public recommendations?
So a good question. To the best of my knowledge, and I'd, I'd like to confer with Paul maybe a little more on this. This policy actually doesn't cover equity markets. Equity markets are typically where you find responsiveness to those types of objectives that may be outlined by a city council and their portfolio. This is, this investment policy is, is strictly about cash. And so in the cash market and the non-equity market, you're looking at really CDs, US Treasury Bills, something that's in that very kind of short window timeframe that's looking at investing a smaller portion of your overall portfolio, not the equity portion of the portfolio. And so I don't know if that answers your question, Counselor Schimmel, but the options of which the investments that are covered under this policy are, are pretty limited. And they're found on, oh, excuse me, they're found on page 14, and there's, there's really one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and there's really nine different kind of cash investments that you could invest in. Most of them are, are Treasuries and bonds and, and things of that nature. So I don't know if that answers your question, but I hope it addresses it, so.
Any other questions for Jesse? Seeing none, what is the wish of the Council?
No move. Second.
Resolution 2025-40 was moved by Counselor Augustusson and seconded by Council President Valenzuela. Any discussion by Council? Seeing none, will the city manager read it, read the resolution by title only, please?
Resolution number 2025-40, Resolution Re-Adopting the Investment Policy for the City of Forest Grove and repealing resolution number 2024-32.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call for the vote?
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Augustusson?
Yes.
Council President Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Schimmel?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Resolution 2025-40 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of six to zero. Jesse, can I ask a quick question? Thank you for all those staff reports, but typically in the past, you have liked to not be a part of the next two resolutions, and is that true for tonight as well?
Yeah, if the Council has no objection, I typically have just left the room to let Council freely deliberate on what they'd like to deliberate on and, and then have Maria come out and get me when the Council's done, if that's okay with the Council.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just wondering, can I read the resolution by title only then? Or who reads it by title only?
I think the city recorder would probably.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure process wise we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to Resolution 2025-41, Accepting the City Manager's Performance Review. And we have our Human Resources Director, Brenda Camilli, who's going to present to us.
Good evening, everyone. So you have two resolutions, your final ones of the evening before you, both having to do with the city manager's evaluation and compensation. So we're going to handle them one at a time. And so the staff report includes information about both of the resolutions. So let's just start with the performance review. In accordance with the city manager's employment agreement, the city council is charged with evaluating the city manager's performance once a year, July 1 through June 30. And the city council has done that, and they've met twice in executive session, April 14 and May 12 to review and conduct the evaluation discussion and also to present the information to the city manager. So in terms of what we are doing tonight, it's not to go over the evaluation in great detail, but the State of Oregon Open Meeting Law requires the council to return to an open public meeting to give a summary of the city manager's annual performance review as it relates to compensation consideration. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the Council for any discussion about Resolution 2025-41, which is just to adopt and accept the city manager's final evaluation, which is dated May 27, 2025.
Okay, thank you, Brenda. Any questions for staff or discussion for the Council on Resolution 2025-41? Just as a review, the performance readings were good. Everyone seemed pretty happy with how he was doing. And so is there a motion on the table for Resolution 2025-41?
So move.
Second.
The Resolution 20 dash, wait, 2025-41 was moved by Counselor Martinez and seconded by Counselor Marshall. Any discussion on it? Seeing none, all, wait, will the city recorder please read it by title only?
Resolution number 2025-41, Resolution of the City Council Accepting the City Manager's Performance Review.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say aye. Hearing none, Resolution 2025-41 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of six to zero. Okay, so I'm going to turn it back over to you for Resolution 2025-42, where we talk about compensation.
Okay, so the second part, and most of the memo, is addressing the compensation and which includes a vehicle allowance for the city manager position in lieu of the city providing a city-owned vehicle. And just a note before I forget on that point, in the recent past, the vehicle allowance has been based on the annual 12-month CPI of the year before the prior year, which was 2.7% in 2024. The Council's not held to that. That's just a point of information. That the council is not held to that, that's just a point of information. So the current salary by the, for the city manager was set by resolution last year, which was effective July first, and it will conclude on June thirtieth, and so the council will be looking at the period of July first, twenty twenty five, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. I have the amount and we will talk about that again in a moment of the last increase. In order to help the council and provide more information for you to consider, staff conducted a market study of the city manager position's compensation of twelve of your cities, which showed the city of Forest Grove city manager position to be approximately, and that's a typo, that should be negative ten point three five. It's correct on the back and I apologize about that. Ten point three five percent below the market median. And so just as a reminder, the compensation policy for city employees is set by city council in the employee handbook, and it's to pay positions within plus or minus five percent of the market median. So the city manager is currently ten percent, over ten percent below the market median. Of these cities that were surveyed, I took a look at what it was that was contributing to our position being so much further behind the market. And one thing that I noted is eleven of the twelve cities that were surveyed provide a deferred compensation contribution benefit to the city manager. So Forest Grove and one other city are the only ones of those comps that don't provide that benefit. And I think the one reason that that is provided for that city manager position is that it's also contributing toward retirement and not just, you know, had taken the same kinds of, you know, compensation. So it's a popular benefit. It's not one that the city of Forest Grove currently offers, but that's an option that I included for the council's consideration this evening. So of those cities that provided the four fifty seven, it's a four fifty seven plan, the deferred compensation plan, they range from three percent to ten percent of base salary. So there was a fairly big range. So staff put together some potential options on page two for the council's consideration. Obviously, the council can put together any combination of, of things that they want to. This is just to give you a little bit of an idea, if you did this, how would that affect the compensation and the market position for the city manager position versus if you do another thing? I want to note though, that the compensation study, in order to make it apples to apples, we always pick a date and time where we have all the information from our peers available. So January two thousand twenty five was the date that all of the comp were done. So this study doesn't take into account any pay increases that peer cities will be getting on July first to their city managers. And as of a couple of weeks ago, everyone was asking each other, hey, what are you giving your city manager? So I think it's, it's not decided in a lot of places yet, so I don't have any information about what other peers are giving their city managers as of July first. So for the apples app comparison, we, we pick a point in time where we have all the data. And so if you look on the second page, I have a chart here and I want to explain it just a little bit to you. The far left column says current, and if you follow that row across, you'll see the current annual base salary for the city manager is one hundred ninety five thousand one hundred and sixty eight. And that's a monthly base salary of sixteen thousand two hundred and sixty four dollars. And at that rate, as you see, I have a column for annual deferred comp, which is zero at this point. So based on that, as of January two thousand twenty five, the city manager is ten point three five percent below the market median. Then I put some options together and cost of living, market adjustments, you can call them whatever you want. So market adjustment means you're just giving an increase to try and address a market issue. Cost of living generally is, what was the CPI, which I mentioned earlier, was two point seven percent. And then I added deferred comp into there. So in the second column, you see cola slash deferred comp. So I gave some options. If the council were, for instance, on the first option, give the city manager a three percent cost of living or market adjustment and no deferred comp. If you follow that across, that would still leave the position seven point eight one, excuse me, seven point one eight percent below the market median. And if you look on the far right hand column that I was just reading from, there are three that are in gray, shaded in gray. And if you look at my note, none of those options would meet the city's compensation policy of being within five percent of the market median. So so I looked at just giving a straight percentage increase for three percent, and if you go down about, about five rows, four percent and five percent toward the bottom, and you see that none of those options even bring them within the city's policy of compensation. So I added deferred comp and it actually could be, it doesn't have to be deferred comp, it could be three percent market adjustment plus three percent cola, which I believe is what the council did last year. They did a four percent, which was the market increase or an adjustment, and then four percent was actually the CPI last year. So it, it could be any combination, but I'm just using deferred comp. So if you look at that, the second line is three percent cola plus three percent of the base pay going into deferred comp would show the annual base salary would go up to two hundred and one thousand zero twenty three and the annual deferred comp would be six thousand thirty one, and that would leave the position at negative four point three two percent of the market median as of January first, basically. So if you follow that down, if that makes sense, if you have any questions about the chart, so the highest, what I, I looked at deferred comp, zero, three, four and five percent with three percent cola and then with a four percent cola, and instead of just making this huge, this chart even bigger, I figured we got the, got the idea by the time I got to five percent. Five percent and zero deferred comp leaves him at negative five point two. Five percent and five, five percent cola, five percent deferred comp would put him right about at the market median. So if you say point five, that's pretty much right at the market median, because zero would be the market median. I deal with this kind of stuff a lot and not many people look at it, so please let me know if you have any questions about the chart or any questions about the information. Meanwhile, before we move on.
Any questions? Counselor Schimmel?
Because we, we pride ourselves on the full service city, that means more complexity for our city manager than other cities. Did the comparisons reflect like cities or just cities in the county?
So, that's a good question. So the city has peer cities that we have used for about twenty years since I've been here, and they were established by a market study that we did. And so the idea is that you want our population to be right about the middle of the peers that you use. That's why we call it a median. And we use only the Portland metro area because that's the area that we recruit from, but we also look at the populations. So for instance, the smallest city that we use for the survey is Gladstone. They're at thirteen thousand population. Forest Grove's at about twenty six to twenty seven thousand population. Like Oswego is the largest and it's thirty nine, close to forty thousand.
Can I add something to, but I think what Counselor Schimmel's getting at is not exactly the size of comparable, but so, I mean, I'm just going to spit it out. I think Jesse has thirteen direct reports, but even though Beaverton is four times the size of us, maybe even larger, they have their own parks and rec department, right? Like the city manager of Beaverton's not looking at their parks and rec, the power, right? Because we in Forest Grove, even though we're smaller, we have lighting power, we have parks and rec, we have police, we have fire, right? Where a lot of our comparables don't have that. So, I mean, I don't want to speak for Counselor Schimmel, but I think the question was, did you, in, in looking at the compare, I mean, I just don't think there are any comparables in this metro area, because the only other full-service city that I know of, and I only know this because I went to college there, is Ashland. And they have around this, it's Ashland, Oregon, they have around the same population, but.
And they have a, an electric utility, the same as we do, much smaller and a very different population. So, so yes, what Mayor Wenzel was saying is correct. There's, some of them have a golf course, you know, so, so there's variations, you know, that they manage.
A golf course?
One city has, I can't remember which one has a golf course. So what we're looking at is primarily, and you're right, the varying levels of responsibilities are going to be different. And Hillsborough has, I think, four deputy city managers in addition to the city manager. So the size is, makes a big difference. But in terms of cities that are similar to us, not having all the same departments necessarily, but similar in size and organization and structure and, you know, in our area, those are the cities that we use. So I don't think any of these have a, none of them have electric utility. I know that. Most of them don't have fire departments because they're districts. So that we do have in many, a few more departments and complex departments as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with you. You supplemented there and, I mean, I guess there's a big asterisk next to peer cities on, on this one thing in particular, and I don't know if in your HR world, there's, there's some way to to put a value to that, that added, much added complexity for, for our city, because if we're going to pride ourselves on something, you know, we should compensate for that complexity above our.
That is a good question.
Or at least know what it is and work toward.
So in compensation theory, you're looking for positions that are basically seventy five percent similar, because none are going to be exactly the same. Police officers, as close as you're going to get, they pretty much do the same job everywhere, but the complexities are very different depending on so many factors in your organization and also in your, in your city. So I don't really know of a fair way to do that. You're looking at the person who has the overall responsibility for managing the whole operation and reports to elected official body. So that's what these have in common. But yeah, that is a difficult thing. That's something the council can make a decision on.
What? Sorry. If you don't mind me having the floor for longer. Would be, maybe the starting point would be like, what, what is the percentage that the percent similar to peer cities that the I guess he's, if I'm thinking right, is he above that or below that? If he's doing more complex.
His compensation?
Well, just the, you're, you're using a, you're using a basis of seventy five percent similar to peer cities. I'm curious how, if we could put a, put a, an indicator on where he's at today relative to the seventy five percent.
I am not sure how to do that.
And I'm just, I mean, it's curious, I'm just trying to figure out some measurable way to reflect his pay versus his peers.
And the seventy five percent.
In a different environment.
Sorry, excuse me. The seventy five percent is basically whether or not you even use them as a comp, and still there's going to be differences. So I don't actually know of a fair way to do that, because I'm not as familiar. We'd have to look at each one of these city manager positions and what they have available. But like I said, I know because when I look at the parks director and I look at when we're doing salary surveys, we look at the public works director, they all vary, but primarily their responsibility, their overall responsibility is the same. They're running that department and anything in it. And Ashland, their electric utility, they're, they also have the communications. So they also do, I think, wireless communications and things like that. So that's a little bit of an anomaly. So you're not going to find exactly the same. There may be things that are maybe a little more complex some places because of certain factors and less, but I, I apologize, I don't have a good way.
I'm just exploring some way to, or around comp. Yeah, the other question was around budget capacity for say the five, five option at the bottom of your table. I mean, is, is that, that budget feasible to do? Or, or where, I guess, where is that line where we need to start this year and grow?
Well, the city council, that's the city manager compensation, so it's outside of our comp plan, the city's comp plan. Since the city council hires the city manager and you also adopt the budget, the city council, there, there isn't a limit, I suppose.
I'm like, seems to be so. Can't remember. You know, just curious about if, what the capacity is.
Counselor Martinez?
Counselor Martinez?
So my thought is, what did we do recently with the fire department? Let's try and be consistent, perhaps with what we've done already with percentages. And if I remember right, there was, what was it, a four percent raise or a three percent increase with a four percent?
You're going to tax me into remembering.
Yeah, I am.
So one thing I want to, Counselor Martinez, is that we do a market study for them too, which we did, and each unit we do that. So it's difficult sometimes to compare across groups because they all have a market survey that's done and the market for firefighters is different than
Sure.
city managers and, but I do believe it was four percent.
I know, most of them.
Spot adjustments for captains and their tenants. So if you add those together, I think some of them were eight percent with the spot adjustment.
Okay, so just really quick, a couple of things. I just want to go over like process things, because I think in order this resolution is going to be done a little differently, because we're going to end up having discussion now, because we have to like come to a consensus about before we have the motion. Is that correct? And is that okay, Mariah, that we're like basically going to be doing our discussion now and then the motion comes because, or do you want us to like throw out some motions and then have them, and then discuss them or?
Um, as far as motions to edit the resolution?
Well, you know, like, I believe that the motion had specific like an amount, like we're going to do this and this. And to get to that, we need to have the discussion before that.
I think that would be okay, yeah.
Okay. And then the other thing I would like to point out is that in the resolution, there's not a blank spot for deferred compensation. And so can we add that?
So if you look at section three or recommendation, Mariah and I added this in here, if the city council wishes to add a deferred compensation plan contribution, a motion will need to be made to add a section to the, hey, I don't even need my glasses to do that. Added to the resolution to that effect, and we drafted section three on the staff report that could be added to the resolution and with the renumbering that would need to, to occur. So there's blanks, to those of you who haven't done this city manager's compensation, the resolution has blanks for you to fill in on each of the areas.
Okay, so I'm good with those. And I wanted to come back to Counselor Martinez's position and just say that I disagree, because for, to be like what we, I think, how we got in this place where we're ten percent below the market value is that, excuse me, for the last nine years that I've done this with Jesse, he's always been like very humble about it and said, hey, I just want three percent, I want whatever the non-represented gets. He's like always been so worried about it being fair across the board. And I say this with a lot of love and a lot of like admiration for Jesse. This is going to create an institutional issue, right, for the structure of our city. If we're not competitive in what we pay a city manager, then we won't, if something happens. He is the longest running city manager in Washington County, ten years. That is not what happening, right? So we're very lucky, first of all, that he stayed. And I believe that he's done a good job, and I think we should pay him on market value, because what will happen if he leaves is we're going to have to make our wages competitive to recruit a good. So to me, it's like this, not necessarily what we've paid our non-reps or firefighters or our public works. There's different jobs because we're, we are full-service city and you know, sometimes that happens, like I'll talk to somebody from one agency and they're like, hey, this isn't fair because of this other group getting this. But there are different unions, there are different licenses, there's different pressure. You know, Jesse literally is on three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
And that's fine. We had to start somewhere. You know, let's get the ball rolling and get this done. So.
Yeah, I think, well, I, I mean, if, I would like to see five percent increase and five percent in defined, I would like to, to fix it. I would like us to get close to the market position of zero. So I, I would propose, but I can't make any motions or anything, but I would propose a five percent cola, five percent defined compensation.
So move.
I would support that. Sorry.
So is that a second?
Counselor Schimmel.
Is that a second? Counsel President?
Yes.
So I have a motion from Counsel Schimmel for five percent cola, five percent deferred compensation and a second to that motion from Counsel President Valenzuela. Okay, let's open it for discussion.
That's fine. Move on. I'm good with that.
Are we good? Well, does anyone have, do we also need to talk about the car? Did we, I didn't have, that's not part of the motion. Do we do a second? Or do we amend it? What's your?
Mariah? The person who made the motion can amend it.
Right. So let's look at the car. What's the proposed compensation for the car?
Are you talking to me?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Or if you can just roll it back. So vehicle allowance is three oh seven.
The vehicle allowance is three six eight six, and if we increased it by the CPI, two point seven, it would be thirty seven eighty six per month. So annually, I do believe, I apologize, I don't think I have that on here, but I did bring my calculator. Forty-five, oh my. That would be, the annual amount would be, I do have it on here. That would be, the annual amount would be, I do have it on here, the annual amount would be thirty-seven eighty-six. It's currently three hundred and one dollars, uh, three hundred and seven dollars per month.
Just amending my motion to include the car allowance at the current CPI.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so that, did you get that, Mariah? That was added on.
So was that four percent?
It was a, it was a current CPI, which I think is two point seven five. Is that correct?
Two point seven.
Two point seven, sorry. In the memo, it says a four percent increase, but.
That was last year's.
Okay.
So the memo shows what was done last year, which was four percent increase plus four percent cost of living. And so the vehicle allowance was thirty-six eighty-six annually.
So it'll be two point seven above that. And then do we need to have a separate? So should we, we need to do a separate motion for the, to find or the deferred compensation?
I think, sounded like Counselor Schimmel's motion included deferred compensation. So with it written out in the report, I think we can assume that that included that language.
Can you go back to the chart, Mariah, so I can fill out the, the resolution link? Or do, do I need to fill this out on this signed one? Or do I need to come in tomorrow and sign a different one?
I'll, I'll have a printed one that you can sign.
Okay. So there's no discussion on this? Counselor Schimmel?
On, on the amended or the main motion?
The whole, the whole thing.
Well, I, I wanted, I think this is one, another one of those public trust resolutions and want to acknowledge, like there's comment about the consistency. Because I, I think that's, that's an easy assumption that to make versus in across mark, across industries. There's what you described as what you evaluate, you know, and individual's role and what rate they're, that they're, you're measuring them to is different than, than others. And I've seen where they goes, can go anywhere from three percent to twenty-five percent because that person is wildly underpaid relative to his peers or, or the market. So I, I want to just acknowledge that it's important that what was raised about consistency relative to, you know, industry standard on assessing the, compensation for a title, person's title.
And I know we haven't voted yet, but I just want to say that I appreciate the council like recognizing that we have a legitimately awesome valuable city manager and that we should pay him fairly for the work that he does, the complexity of the work. The things we've, he's achieved in the ten years that he's done it. So I just, I mean, I know we haven't voted yet, so I guess, uh, let's do the vote. But I'm preemptively thinking, or thinking you beforehand, I guess, I don't know. Okay, city recorder, please call roll.
Uh, do you want me to read the title first?
What? Oh, title, yeah, you should probably do the process correctly. Yes, please read the title first.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash four-two, authorizing compensation for the city manager for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six.
Okay, will you call roll, please?
Uh, Counselor Schimmel?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Gustafson?
Yes.
And Council President Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Resolution two zero two five dash four-two has been approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of six to zero. Thank you very much. We will now move on to item G. Thank you, Brenda, thanks for staying out late for us. I will now move on to item G on the agenda, which is council communications. And I will start with Council President Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. So I do have some, some news. So the summer reading started already. It was launched on Saturday the fourteenth. And some other news, there is a teen library intern that has been hired for the summer. This position was supported by a grant from the state library to hire a teen librarian. So a person was selected to work in the teen area during the summer, getting experience of what it's, you know, what it's like to work and working at a library. So this is a very valuable grant that is providing an opportunity, a valuable opportunity for one of our youth. Then the, also, the fall book sale is going to take place on October sixteenth and eighteenth. The friends of the library, they have already approved the budget. And the winner, winner of the, winner of the high school scholarship has been selected. That is a thousand dollar award. They did not have the name of the person, I believe, at that time. All right, so there was a review of the goals for twenty-five, twenty-six, return to the arts. It covered, it was covered at this meeting. The gathering of the groups, which is a yearly event, the date is to be determined. But it is, it will take place sometime in October and it will be on a Sunday. And Colleen will give us the information and I will extend an invitation to you all. The National Library Week was very, very successful. Staff was very grateful and appreciative of the gifts. They received T-shirts and some other gifts there at the library. The T-shirts were really cool because they were created by our youth from the high school, Forest Grove High School. I got to see them and they're so creative and just, they did a beautiful job with that. So we certainly appreciate them being part of this. The behavioral policy of the library is being reviewed. A training on de-escalation is needed. Colleen has been in contact with the chief, of course, to be able to discuss on issues, things that have happened in the library that need to be addressed. So it is important to have a training on de-escalation, unfortunately, searching for a solution on how to, you know, navigate these challenges. Also, the art policy that is being reviewed and the murals policy, we're going to start working, they will start working on that. I'll be just the messenger. Because the Public Arts Commission does have a policy, a murals policy that they created like six years ago. But the library needs one that it is, that is specific to the library. So they will begin to work on that. And those are the news from the library. Now, from the Policy Advisory Board. I have some news from there too. So the name will change now to Community Development Block Grant Policy Advisory Board. Okay, I mean, that's what it was, but it's going to change to Community Development Policy Advisory Board. The purpose of this is to reflect the full areas of oversight that this board has. So the name is changed. That, you know, something that they wanted to do and it has already, you know, it has already happened. There was funding allocated out of cycle due to an emergency from one of the CPAP residence places that had an emergency. So we were able to allocate funds to help them. They're an organization that has worked on that, you know, on housing and helping the community. So it's immensely important that we were able to do that. Now, unfortunately, there were some bad news. Chair Harrington is now part of the Policy Advisory Board. So she gave us a message about the implementation of DEI in Washington County. So the county, the commissioners, everyone there is, is between a rock and a hard place. In order to receive this federal funding, they, they will have to modify the language. So we had a presentation about federal funding. There was an audit of the language. Completed language audit of the initial federally these favored terms identified as potentially problematic. They will continue to monitor the situation. And the county anticipates spending over a hundred and thirty million federal dollars. So ninety percent of these are from direct federal funding. Now, what could be in jeopardy? The programs that, that could be affected are the CDBG projects for housing. HUD rental assistance, transportation projects, WIC, maternal, child and family services could be at risk. Climate resiliency planning, implement weather response, preparedness, services, prevention and response to preventable and communicable disease, bias and hate crimes funding. So they need the funding. But implementing DEI, bringing DEI to Washington County, to our board, Board of Commissioners is something that many community members and community leaders fought very hard for. And now I was one of the people that was there to testify, there were many of us. So it is unfortunate that you have to make some decisions like that. Many community members are disappointed at the decision made by the county that they have to, you know, kind of modify, modify the language. And community here, some members are concerned that we will do the same. And that's part of our values. You know, DEI is part of our values, goals and objectives, and I hope we never have to.
Can I ask a couple of questions about that?
Yes, of course.
So my understanding is that they actually, at the last board meeting, actually like tabled it for later discussion that they haven't voted on it. And then, you know, I guess, and I, I can call some people I know on the board, but did anyone ask a question of like, hey, can we have signed off on these grants? But then have an asterisk or disclaimer saying like, we are not going to, you know, follow these things? Because my understanding is that that executive order is going through the courts because we don't know if it's constitutional. So I'm just wondering, is there any like space in there? Does the county have, did anyone ask that question at that meeting? Is there space for the county to push back a little bit and say, hey, we're, you know, we're going to wait, like, we're going to sign, like, yes, we would like these fundings, but we're not doing this because there hasn't been a decision by our judicial branch that protects the constitution?
Yeah, so I have a attestation language attached to the current pending contract that, that they have. Will not use federal funding to promote diversity, equity and inclusion mandates, policies, programs or activities that violate, violate any applicable federal anti-discrimination laws. This includes references to the executive order, shall not use grant funds to promote gender ideology as defined in Executive Order fourteen one sixty-eight. Defending women from gender ideology extremism and restoring biological truth to the federal. So that's, that was the last slide of the presentation. And for what I understood from Chair Harrington at the PAB meeting, because subsequently they had a meeting, the Board of Commission. And you say that they tabled that. So that's a good thing. Then maybe, you know, this is actually not going to happen. But what I felt she was saying at that meeting is that, you know, there is the inclination to do away with this language in order to, to receive the funds, you know, and it's.
Yeah, I don't want to speak for anyone else, but in correspondence between the chair and I, I think, you know, what you said. I think she's feeling a lot of tension and, and worried that some of our most vulnerable communities, community members will be impacted without getting funding. And it's like, you know, how to, it's the tipping of the scale, right? And that, in that policy decision of what, what to do, so.
It's very, very hard. So those are the news that I had.
Well, thank you, Council President. Uh, Don, or Counselor Gustafson?
Um, I don't have anything to report, but I did want to comment on Counselor Valenzuela's report. They are having a meeting tomorrow, although I don't know if this was on the agenda, but I've signed up to testify. Because I just, I just found out about it the other day. But it, it is a really difficult decision and as far as what you were talking about, you know, it's in the courts. There are many things in the courts and some are being held up by the courts and some are, you know, they're getting rid of. The problem is it will stay in the courts for as long as it stays in the courts. And in the meantime, that money doesn't come in. So even, even if eventually the courts push back and say, no, you can't do that. It's not constitutional because we all know it's not constitutional. By then, people have suffered. I don't necessarily agree with removing the DEI comments. This is just a fact of, of the situation and why it's, it's such a tough decision. Because it's not going to be over with anytime soon.
And the community wants services. They want perfect roads and sidewalks and transportation and all these things. The county, to be able to provide that, might have to make some sacrifices that they really don't want to do. But unfortunately, we do depend, you know, on funding. Like, it's very hard.
It is hard, inch and mile is what I keep thinking, inch and mile. That's all I got.
Counselor Marshall?
Thank you.
Basically Brad kind of went over most of what we were going over. He did, did mention that ninety-five percent of the schools are being worked on right now during the summer. Cornelius' school looks to be done by the end of the summer and they'll be handing over the keys to city Cornelius or their gym and cafeteria area that they were going with. Well, staff here, the rec program started Monday, their first outing was to Almsey. They were able to promote two internal staff to leadership roles for the rec program. Skyhawks and Lego camps will be starting soon. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to mention it, but August first, there'll be a thirty, the thirtieth anniversary for Adventures Without Limit. We can get, I'll probably get more details and get that out to you guys soon, so you guys can attend if you'd like.
Cool, thank you. Counselor Martinez?
Okay, so my only reports on the sister city committee are delegation, which consists of Mayor Wenzel and Counselor Schimmel and his spouse will be leaving July first. They picked a gift for the, for new zen. Anyway, it's a, it's made by an artisan that we have here in Forest Grove that's usually at the first Wednesday. It's a chunk of wood, which, you know, is, it's nice. So, and apparently he makes it so you just pop it up and it's a castle. Very unique and different, so.
It's really cool.
Yeah, so anyway, we're excited about that. That's it.
Counselor Schimmel?
Or Counselor Schimmel?
Just regarding CCE, I want to thank everyone for your contribution in our earlier work session on the twenty forty plan. I believe that, that conversation satisfies my request for feedback going into CCE. So I'm going to, I'm going to make the request to Stephanie that, that CCE watches that hour of discussion. Because I, I think we effectively provided feedback to them for the ATM in October. So thank you. You know, I, I hazard to say anything besides what, what Counselor Gustafson and Counselor President. You know, I hazard to say anything besides what, what Counselor Gustafson and Counselor President Valenzuela said about the climate of, you know, federal funding. And I, I hope that we'll get those two grants here soon, because that's a really tough challenge. And I saw that it's not on the agenda.
You didn't see it either.
It's on there. But, you know, I do want to follow up on a, a letter that was sent by the Bytes restaurant owner. I'm sure everyone's seen it by now. And just in my canvassing of business owners in that, in that district, you know, those, the, the message is consistent, that, you know, the Bytes owner, I think, goes further in their, in their assertions about what, what they might do on their own to remedy their situation. But, but some of the challenges they face in terms of the financial logistical challenges with not just the market, but events in general, where there are other food vendors, is a challenge. And then general disillusionment with, you know, the communication and, and the working relationships between, but what should be good partnerships between city, Chambers City Club, and Alonate, and other CBOs that interface in that district. That, that I trust that we, we as a council can help to remedy. And then with, with many other property owners, they, when it comes to some of the URA grant or their, their want and need or wish to expand their, their businesses, they're, they're, they seem to be fixated on outdated norms or outdated responses. So when, when the property owner wants to break up their building and to, and, and offer more storefronts, they've been told in the past, no, 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 that that planner's gone. So the answer today could be yes, 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 but they're, they're already fixated, they've already, they've given up, you know, their disillusion. So I think there's an opportunity to remedy that through some, some outreach and, and, and even property owners another opportunity to expand their, their property into more commercial, usable, commercial real estate. So I, I think, I think that's all. The Pacific Avenue and Main Street, I think, are the two areas of focus. But I hope we can, we can, Jesse, we, we can look at how we can do that, and I'd be happy to partner with Miles or anyone to do some of that canvassing.
Thank you, Counselor. Jesse, with our city manager update.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, just a couple of things. Need to put on my glasses here. I spoke with CFM, our, our firm that does our congressionally directed spending requests and assists us with federal grants. And Senators Merkley and Wyden have both submitted a congressionally directed spending request for $3 million for the TV Highway Safety Improvements project.
That's great.
Yep. On the House side, if you recall, Representative Bonamici successfully secured $850,000 for the project already. And the House basically submitted the same projects that they did last year. So we're very fortunate to be included in both Merkley and Wyden's request on the Senate side for $3 million, and I'll keep the council updated as this winds its way through Congress. The Civics Academy survey is still out there and still live, so if you have any interest in the Civics Academy, feel free to take the survey. We have a firefighter recruitment going on. We have five vacant positions at the present time. Three that were added as a result of the budget, budget, and two that are existing vacancies. So for those in the audience that are listening, if you know of anybody that might be interested in a firefighting position, please, please apply. Light and power, as part of the wildfire mitigation project, you may see some crews up on David Hill Road and Northwest Hillside Road. This is part of our project that is taking our overhead power lines and putting them underground. That process requires drilling, boring holes underneath the roads and putting conduit in, certain vault installations in certain places. And then eventually, after that is done, putting the actual wire underground into those conduits and vaults. So that process is underway, if you see some crews up there. Other than that, continuing to make progress on Knox Rigs Park. And, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jesse. So I wanted to circle back to the ATM and something, I just want to propose an idea. So the fire department does a public safety fair every October. And I think, you know, I mentioned this to Jesse before, but I think it'd be really cool if we took that on the road, the east side of Forest Grove, and maybe set up shop at Neil Armstrong and had the public safety fair there, and then also had the ATM at the same time. Because what I'm finding, like, trying to figure out this community engagement of, like, not fatiguing people, but getting people involved, is like, there has to be this reciprocity of, like, give get, right? And so, you know, kids can be shooting the fire hose and going on riots. But the other thing, too, is like, I've noticed in my time being on council, is that, you know, it's like, people that live on the east side town don't even know these things, because it's so far away, and it feels like that's just another divider. So if we could just set up the schedule of odd years, the ATM or the public safety fair is on the east side, even years that's on the west side. And so then people can expect it, but we also just, even looking at that map of the voting turnout and how people vote on the police station. Like, there is this divide in Forest Grove, and so I'm just always curious if there's ways to, to fix that, I guess. So that would be like one idea, and, you know, if you could talk to Chief Gearing about that, Jesse, at your director's meeting, and I don't know if CCI has a, an opinion about that, but I think we could do that all together until you get the public safety fair, you get information about the 2040 plan. Let's see, yes. Yeah, I don't, the, I, I feel for the county commissioners making a decision. Because the truth is, a lot of their budget is federal funding. And when you know that the most vulnerable people in your community are going to be the people that hurt the most initially, I think it's, for lack of a better phrase, I feel like it's a little bit of, of like bullying to be put in a position of choosing values and beliefs in the Constitution over funding. I think it's, I think it's wrong. So I'm sorry that the county commissioners are in that position. And I, I hope, you know, through conversations, through other things, we can figure out a way to protect our Constitution and protect our most vulnerable communities. And I think that's just all I have to say about that. So I'm going to end that with, or end our meetings with those comments. Have a good night. Oh, wait, I have one more thing. Sorry, this is actually pretty important. Counsel President Valenzuela, I may be absent at the next meeting. It's really iffy, because I, my daughter's going to be having a baby, so I might need to help her. So I don't.
No, she's not.
So I don't fully know, like, it's, her due date is the 22nd, but if, you know, she thinks she's going to go early, I think it's more hopeful. But anyways, if I, I will let you know, and I'll let the council know, but.
This is after your back report.
Yeah, July 14th, but that's in the next council meeting. Her due date's July 22nd, so that's what we're, and then I'm going to a conference on the 29th. But hopefully it all works out with my time. Okay, cool. I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 9:44. Thank you.
All right.
When will you return?